Now the microphone's coming out. Oh, good. Microphone is here, so Keith is going to start our program a little early.
Welcome, everyone, to our 2007 Asheville City Council Candidate Forum. This is a very proud tradition of Asheville civitan club and our commitment to building good citizenship and having many of the issues be able to receive a good hearing before we make our choices. And for those guests here today, we are all committed to voting, so you have a very good crop of voters and people who will make recommendations to other voters to...so it's a good opportunity to be introduced to both the issues and the candidates. We do want to make a special arrangement for one of the candidates, Dwight Butner, who is here today. Many of you had a chance to shake his hand and get to speak with him. He is the president of the Asheville Downtown Association, which is having its annual meeting today, and he's got to run off to be part of that program. So it's very nice of him to be with us today, and we just want to give him a chance to introduce himself before he has to excuse himself. So Dwight, if you would come up and say a few words.
Thank you very much, Keith. Thank you to the civitans for holding this forum. I think that this has become the most exciting part of the election to me because all of the candidates are getting to get out and express their views and share ideas about the future of Asheville. I bring you greetings from the Asheville Downtown Association. One of my claims to fame is that I have been the president of that association for the last two years and on their board for about six. And we have our...had our annual State of Downtown Luncheon scheduled today at this time, and I'm conflicted, so I have to leave. I regret that deeply because I would really like to be able to stay and engage and listen to your ideas about the future of Asheville. This is a very important election, in my opinion. William Jennings Bryan said one time that destiny is a matter of choice, it's not a matter of chance. And we are going to be facing a number of choices in this upcoming election, which I think are critical to the future of downtown. One of the things we're going to choose is how we're going to govern ourselves, whether or not we're going to be governed from the top down or the bottom up. I deeply and firmly believe in the...in democracy and the ability of the voters to choose your leaders. I think that the upcoming referendum on partisan versus nonpartisan elections is a key issue to Asheville, and I firmly believe in nonpartisan elections because I think it is more important to vote for the person than it is to vote for the party. And I deeply believe that everyone should be able to run by the same rules when it comes to electing your candidates. Another thing that we're going to be dealing with is Asheville has got challenges in terms to growth and development. I think it's an incredibly important time for us in our history as we start receiving and guiding the growth and the interest that we have in this community. I think everyone wants their children and their grandchildren to be able to walk in the woods, breathe clean air, and drink clean water. I also believe that we also want our children and our grandchildren to be able to get a job and buy a house and build a good life here. And one is no good without the other. It is absolutely essential that we have leaders that appreciate the depth and breadth and complexity that is Asheville and is ready to work for the good of the whole as we move forward. The last thing that we're going to be dealing with is how we're going to be treating ourselves and how we're going to be treating each other in this community. We need leaders that are prepared to unite and listen to different ideas and different ways of doing things, leaders that are not married to their own solutions but are willing to listen with open minds and an open heart and with a spirit of goodwill and have a...and give each other the benefit of the doubt. All too often in this community, we seem to be able to tell one another what we don't like about something and don't take time enough to figure out what we do. I sincerely hope I bring that kind of attitude to counsel. I sincerely hope that you'll consider voting for me, and I am truly, truly sorry that I'm not going to have an opportunity to answer your questions. Thank you very much for the time to talk to you today, and enjoy your lunch. I love it. Thank you.
Dwight, if you don't run too fast, we're going to bless the food now, but if you're gone, you're gone. Of course, Frank. Oh, Frank, there you are. Invocation, Frank Morris.
Heavenly Father, we thank thee for this day, for our families, friends, our civitan club and members. We ask your blessing for members who are unable to be with us today, especially those who are ill or distressed. May they find comfort in your presence. We give thanks to those who prepared this repast. Bless this food to our service, to our use, and to thy service. Amen.
Thank you, Frank, and we do want to thank our greeter today. He even went around by the table to greet people that were just getting their meals, so they wore shirts. Thanks a lot, I appreciate that. It was real nice. You all thought we started the program without the 50/50, didn't you? How many times have I done that since I've been president? Both times, I think I did it? We're going to do 50/50 right now. How much is it? $10 for the 50/50. Check your tags out, take your tickets out, so you know what's going on. Jan, you did this before, and they were very happy. That's the good news. This is the... We're going to have an audit right quick if Jan pulled out his own number. Our winning number today is 096307. All right, Roger. Roger, you told me the amount was $10. You want to up it any? Okay, do we have any guests today that we want to introduce? Larry? I don't think I probably ought to tell you what I said to him when he was sitting down over there. I said, "I wonder whether he was a guest or a member." I said, "He's much too young to be a member." So he said he was a guest. There he's a guest, so we're glad to have you with us. Not to put any stops to the programs tonight, but while we're talking, Tom...okay. Roger? Okay. Yes?
My name's Heather Rayburn, and I'm with them in lock today.
Good afternoon, my name is Jake Quinn, and I'm really glad to be here because this is a great event. I'm here with the way I myself, and I'm here with Heather Rayburn, and actually with the rest of the candidates.
Thank you both for being with us.
And we have a very special guest today, our representative, Bruce Goforth, is here. Bruce, if you'd like to...
I'm really interested in what the absolute upside here is.
Oh, gang. Good, glad to have you with us. Are there other guests who, obviously, I did not take the time to introduce? Okay, you've had a chance. Handout number three will be passed out to your tables in a while, like we had one and two a couple of weeks before. And the three today is a daily survival kit, and it's a list of things that you may want to keep handy whenever you go places, and it's a survival kit. I think you'll enjoy it today, reading it. I am not going to take any more time. What I would like to do is introduce Keith to you, and he doesn't need any introduction, but here comes Keith, and he is going to introduce the panel today and the people talking with you and the program today, how we're going to run it. So Keith, it's yours.
Thank you, President Larry. We are very pleased that y'all could be here today, and we're sorry Dwight had another engagement and couldn't be here, but we do have Councilman Jan Davis, candidate Bill Russell, Councilman Brownie Newman, and candidate Elaine Light here today. And we're going to give each of you two minutes to come up and give an introduction to yourself and your candidacy. We have a timekeeper. Frank Holby's going to hold up 15 seconds and then hold up for...go ahead and stop. And then what we'll do is we'll take questions and give you each a minute to answer. I think you've discovered that you don't really need two minutes to go too far, and that way we can get through more questions. And if everyone will think about their questions, if you have one that you would prefer be read from the podium, you know, grab a piece of paper and write it down. But if...y'all seem to have self-selected an order, which is good because sometimes the person at the end of the alphabet can be the one who seems like the lone person at the end. So we'll start with Councilman Jan Davis and...
Thank you, Keith. It's always a pleasure to be here. In fact, I have been here enough to where I almost feel like I'm a member, and it...I'm grateful for that. And food's always good. That carrot cake was real special. A while ago, I was talking to George Ivey, and he said, "Well, I really was glad to see you do well in the primary," and he said, "Now, you've got to lead." And so I think I'll do that, George. You being a good Biltmore Forest person, I think that will be my first thing is to annex Biltmore Forest. It will...it will relieve our debt somewhat. Actually, Mr. Colton told me that Bill McCandless said that same thing one time before here to get people's attention, and I think that that would get everyone's attention. But anyhow, I thought it was a good story. I appreciate being part of the city council. I have enjoyed my first term. It's been great to work with my colleagues. I feel like that we have done a lot of good things for the city of Asheville. We've seen some real progress. As those of you who remember from our earlier times here, we worked really hard on the civic center, and we haven't got a new building. I mean, it's the same building, but we have committed real dollars to making a better place out of that. Public safety, I spoke to that issue before for the mayor one time, and we've done a huge amount for public safety. We have gone from a police and fire, fire and rescue departments that were losing people to attrition because of poor pay. We have enacted a consulting studies recommendations to improve their pay, and we have incrementally started that and are going into the third year, or will be going into the third year of that. We have seen tremendous retention from that. It's made a great deal of difference in the amount of losses we're suffering with the fire and rescue department, and we are seeing tremendous gains in police department. In fact, our academy that's working there is doing real well. I know we're all hearing of gang violence right now. It's very important that we do, as a community, things to address that issue, and I think the major thing is job and workforce development. That's how you best provide things for young people to do rather than be part of gangs. Thank you for having us.
Thank you, Jan, and candidate Bill Russell.
Hi, I'm Bill Russell, and it's really nice to be here. I'll tell you a funny story before I get started. I went to the Renaissance for this meeting today and walked in the front door and said, "I'm here for the civitan meeting," and they said, "Oh, it's right down here in the ballroom." And so I walked down and I saw Nathan Ramsey walking, and I just followed him down, introduced myself to the speakers, and I said, "I'm a speaker today, too," and they looked at me kind of strangely. So ultimately, about 15 minutes later and five minutes till 12, I was told, "Actually, this is not the civitan club." So that's what happens when there are about six different forums from Monday night to Thursday night. I'm a newcomer to politics, so you probably have never seen my face before, especially in this arena, but I just want to say that I'm here as a true commitment to Asheville, and I'm doing this from a sense of civic duty. I've been here since 1999. I own an insurance agency, a State Farm agency, down on Hendersonville Road. Nice to see Mr. Goforth, one of my customers there. And it was...I was the very first person to sign up when they opened up the elections, and it was kind of interesting because they asked me some interesting questions like, "Are you going to raise any money?" And I said, "Oh, no." They said, "I'm going to pay for this on myself." So coming into this, I really didn't know what I was getting into, and I've learned a lot over the last two months. And all these forums and all these meetings and what I've learned from the questions and from the other candidates and the incumbents has really been a very eye-opening experience, and I'm more passionate than ever to get involved and to serve. I live in North Asheville. I'm married. I have a three-year-old and a one-year-old, and I'm from a town called Huntington, West Virginia. For those of you who don't know Huntington, it used to be about the size of Asheville in the early 1970s, about 80,000. And over the last 35 years, they've had their own challenges to deal with, with the changing economies, and at this time Huntington is down to 52,000, and the population is dwindling, and the opportunities for children and youth are limited. If there's one purpose for me and one agenda I have for Asheville, it's to create a place where our children and our future and our kids' kids will have a place to live, enjoy the mountains, and also have places to work and earn a living and have a great life and a great quality of life, because I think that's unique to us, and I bring a new type of leadership. I call it servant leadership, and I'm looking forward to your questions. And again, it's great to be here.
Thank you, Bill, and Councilman Branny Newman.
Thank you, Keith. It's great to see everybody today. My name is Brownie Newman, and I want to thank civitan for having us here today. I grew up on a working farm here in the Blue Ridge Mountains. My wife Beth and I live in the Monford neighborhood. We have two young daughters, Tess, who is three years old, and Lizzie, who is five months old. When I ran for city council four years ago, I promised to bring new leadership and new ideas to the challenges facing Asheville, and I've worked hard to make good on that promise. Four years ago, Asheville faced a water system that had been neglected for decades and was falling apart. We had a police department that was understaffed and suffering from high turnover. We planned...we had plans for sidewalks that just sat on the shelf, and we had a civic center with a roof that leaked. During my term on city council, we have accomplished the following. We've invested $35 million to begin addressing our neglected water infrastructure. We've enacted long overdue pay raises for the hard-working men and women in the Asheville Police Department and Asheville firefighters, and increased the number of sworn officers on our force by 15 percent to make sure all of our neighborhoods are as safe as possible. I'm very proud to have the endorsement and support of the Asheville firefighters for my reelection campaign. We've approved plans and funding to begin addressing the deferred maintenance needs on the Asheville Civic Center. We have doubled our funding for sidewalk improvements throughout the city, and we accomplished all of this while lowering our property tax rate by more than every other municipality in Buncombe County during the revaluation period last year, and then this year we enacted an additional property tax reduction. I've also sponsored and passed new ordinances to protect neighborhoods and steep slopes from harmful development. We've created a more user-friendly transit system and increased ridership by more than 30 percent in just two years. We've established Asheville as a national leader for environmental sustainability. I want to continue the progress that we have started. It has been a real honor to represent Asheville for the last four years, and I appreciate everyone giving me an opportunity to do that. I ask for your support, and I appreciate the chance to be with you today.
Thank you, Brownie. Candidate Elaine Light.
Good afternoon, everybody. Thank you for being here. My name is Elaine Light, and I've lived in Asheville for 20 years. I've had the pleasure of raising my daughter Rachel here. She's now in her second year at UNCA. I'm also a small business owner. I've been publishing Critter Magazine for...since 1998, almost 10 years now. I've worked hard over the past few years, volunteer leader in the Save Our Slops campaign, also with Asheville Park, which is people advocating real conservancy, and founding member and board member of Mountain Voices Alliance, which is a grassroots environmental organization that started about a year and a half ago in response to some of the rapid overdevelopment issues that we started to see a couple of years ago. We've won some battles, we've lost others, but the truth is we cannot continue at this pace of development without suffering consequences soon. Many people say that growth is inevitable, and a certain level of growth is, and it's healthy and desirable. But like all of us here today, I love this city, and to see it turn into anywhere USA is very sad to me. I think we need to really have a plan for what we want to see happen here. Overdevelopment and uncontrolled growth can ruin a community very quickly, within a matter of years. If we look at overdevelopment as an umbrella issue, under the canopy of overlocation of neighborhoods, increased property taxes, lack of affordable housing, lack of infrastructure often, and increased pollution, traffic, degraded, you know, degradation of our environment, I think we really need to consider and decide what do we want to see for Asheville in the future, and I'm hoping that we can come up as a community with a plan that will benefit everyone, maintain our quality of life, but we need a plan. Thank you very much.
Okay, in a moment, we're going to start taking questions. Heather Rayburn has graciously accepted the role of bringing the microphone around, so if you will raise your hand...
Yes, sir.
Yep, it's working. If you'll raise your hand, we'll take questions, and if you'll sort of let her know who, you know, who wants to have a question, then we'll have a...try to have an orderly basis for doing this, and then we'll rotate back and forth through the candidates. I'm just going to start with a question. One of the things that concerns Asheville civitan club in both its creed and in its...in our activities, as we raise money for annual scholarships that we give to students from our local high schools, we give good citizenship awards to student leaders from each of our seven public high schools, we sponsor Kids Voting in order to help to educate the next generation to be lifelong voters and appreciate the important role as citizens and their role in being involved and actively being participants in the public process, as you have done by volunteering to be a candidate. There are things about education that we are especially concerned about, as evidenced by what I've just mentioned. So I'm going to ask you, in our regular programs, we often hear about issues like...we heard from the...one of the assistant district attorneys this summer about the problem...the growing problems with gangs and its influence over our young people. We regularly have programs on, say, the Asheville Parks and Recreation Programs at the W.C. Reed Center and its role in education and promoting effective participation of the students who, in the past, have often had problems. We just want to know, Asheville City Council makes appointments to the Asheville City School Board, but provides no further funding and no oversight for the school board. But Asheville City Council finances Asheville Parks and Recreation, and as we're finding from the benefits of having a very effective after-school program at the Reed Center, that is a big support for success at the high school in particular. What do you think Asheville City Council's role should be in making improvements that benefit the children who are in after-school programs? And if...let's start with Bill Russell, since we started with Jan last time.
That is a long question. How can city council help improve our after-school programs? Is that...I think encouraging the private sector to get involved will certainly help. I do not know the...what limit the city council's been in some of these after-school programs at this point. That's one of my...probably disadvantages coming in is being a full-time insurance guy for the last 10 years. I haven't had time to study these things. I think good community and private involvement in these types of programs should be encouraged by the city council. I'm involved in some programs at Asheville High School. I encourage everyone who works for me to be involved with some type of civic duty during the week, pay time, once a month, and that part of giving back, I think, has kind of been lost in time, and I think if business leaders and if our city can get involved and encourage folks to take part in those after-school programs and with communications from the Shiloh...this is a one-minute response? Are you on me on this? Okay, gotcha. Some of the concerns in the Shiloh neighborhood are getting the parents and creating outlets for children after school to keep them off the streets, to keep them out of gangs, and so I do not have the answer as far as city council's role in that, but anything we can do to help provide outlets for children, I think, is a phenomenal thing for outreach and also to have good role models for our children to see what they should do when they get into the working world. Thanks.
You know, Asheville's a community where there's different parts of our infrastructure that really have not been taken care of over the years. The water system definitely fits into that category. I think we've made a lot of progress on that, but a lot of our community centers, if you visit them, a lot of them are not in good shape. We...our city council has started the work of fixing up some of the community centers. We invested $500,000 to begin repairs to the Reed Center. We also invested about $200,000 from our community development block grant funds to address the Burton Street Community Center in West Asheville, which really needs help. The city runs a very good Parks and Recreation Child Care Center, and I'm very proud of that. I think we should continue it. The city, when we look at the infrastructure needs in Asheville, we need to do more to address them, but I think people in Asheville and businesses in Asheville already pay more than their fair share in property taxes, so we've got to look for other ways to do this than just throwing money at it. I personally believe the city and the county need to look at some...taking some of the important first steps in terms of better cooperation in merging certain city and county functions. I think of the different departments we have, the civic center and Parks and Recreation is probably one of the most logical places to start. The folks who use the civic center are not just people in Asheville, people from all over western North Carolina come there. If every one of the counties using that facility, I believe everyone in the county should be helping to finance that facility, so we can't just keep looking to the same 70,000 people who live in Asheville to pay for everything. So I'd be...it does mean that the city of Asheville loses some control, but I believe we should be willing to lose some control in order to really have these facilities better taken care of than we can do by ourselves.
Having a daughter that graduated Asheville High School, I can tell you that there are issues. I remember spending two years trying to get a program into Asheville High called Not My Kid, and it was a prevention program run by an organization in Arizona. They were willing to come here free of charge. All we had to do was pay their airfare and put them up at a place here. The parents and the children, there were two segments to this program, peer program and a parent education program, and I spent two years going in circles through red tape trying to get these people to come and trying to get the community at the Asheville Board of Education to accept this offer. I finally had to give up. I can tell you that I think that sometimes there's denial. People are saying there is no problem in places where they need to be acknowledging the problem. I think part of it also could be...it would be helpful to have community policing programs where specially trained officers actually are integrated into the communities on foot, on bicycle. Develop relationships at the after-school centers with the children in the communities. Build trust, build a bond. They can...I'm sorry, I can't see that from there. Time's up, okay? Trust, I think education is the key, and building relationships with the parents and the families.
Thank you, and we have a question over here. Oh, sorry, I'm sorry. Yes, you do. My apologies.
Your question took long enough, it took my time. I'll be quick...I'll be quick about it. First of all, Keith is probably one of the most dedicated members of the community to education, and I appreciate that. The Reed Center is very important. I think that, sure, we funded $500,000, but I'm afraid that's not enough. Frankly, the Reed Center is an island of refuge for a lot of kids, and there's some opportunities to make it a better place, and I would like to see a much better version of it occur where that they have the opportunity to go there and learn arts, learn skills that they may...computer skills, things that they may take into life and would encourage them into a direction of productivity rather than being swayed by gangs and membership of that kind of thing. I think we need to encourage a little bit more vocations in those centers, and I would be supportive of supporting our centers a great deal more than what we do. I think that, sure, money's a problem, but I think that the cost of not doing that probably hurts our centers as much or hurts the community as much or more than it would be to fund those centers. Oftentimes, that's where those kids have a peer group that is a positive peer group, and so I'm very supportive of that. I'm also supportive of doing a little more proactive toward the school system. I sometimes feel a jab in my side when I talk to commissioners about our lack of participation in the programs. in the programs.
Thank you, Jan. John Anderson has a question.
John Anderson. Can you introduce, say something about the controversy of the Ellington proposal?
Branny, you want to please start?
The question is about the Ellington proposal, and we're going to find out what happens tonight, so stay tuned. There are, there are some limits on what members of city council can say about certain development proposals that are coming before city council. There are, it's a very, and it's a very frustrating process, but there are certain development proposals which are, according to state law, quasi-judicial in nature, which means that we can, from a legal standpoint, only base our decision on the evidence that is presented at the city council meeting. And so if any person predetermines a position on an issue like that, they actually can't vote on it at the, at the decision. So I can't, I can't say too much more about it. The only other thing I would add is, we know that our downtown is experiencing the biggest development boom that we've seen since the 1920s. And we have initiated a downtown planning process to really try to get more community input on what we want the future of downtown to look like. And, you know, the community, there's a lot of diversity of opinions out there. I think the Ellington is probably 50/50, based on the things I hear from people. About 50% of people love it, 50% really think it's too big or have other concerns about it. So hopefully, this downtown planning process will give us a way to reach greater community consensus about development in downtown.
This is one time I'm grateful, I'm not yet on council, so I can say how I feel. I'm not in favor of the Ellington. I think it's too much, it's too big. It's, everybody's calling it a landmark building. And my fear is that if we allow this largest building to be built in Asheville, a landmark structure at a time prior to having a master plan for downtown, I'm concerned about the precedent it will set. And it's easier to have the plan before the buildings begin to arrive than to try to work a plan around the largest building in Asheville. Thank you.
Again, we, we really can't speak to our position on that clearly, but frankly, and we look out the window here, that's exactly where it's going to be, should it occur. And I think those concerns affect all of us. I think we're all concerned about the height, the magnitude of the building. We also have questions about traffic. We're going to be looking at those tonight, asking hard questions, and we have to rely on the professional staff and the people that come before us to give us honest answers, and we have to ask those questions. Whether it's good or bad, as Brownie alluded to, is kind of in the eye of the beholder. It's, it's pretty hard to imagine that the city wouldn't be anxious to see a landmark or signature building built if it can be done well. And I think that we should be open to that process. I too would, and I was one of the people that promoted bringing a downtown master plan forward. I would like to have that plan in place, but frankly, it isn't. And there, time is money in the construction business. I would have a very difficult time asking those people to wait until that plan's done. We're probably a year, year and a half out on that plan being completed. So I think this is an opportunity for the community. We're going to look at it objectively and fairly, consider those things that we'll be good or bad about it, and vote it up or down tonight. So it's, it's one of those things, not an easy, that's why they pay us the big bucks, make the hard decision. But anyhow, it's, it's one of those things. We all love Asheville very much, and we want to make the right decisions. Thank you.
If you have a question, let us know who you're going to be next.
I believe in playing by the rules and being fair and being equitable and not changing I am in support of a council that is going to set policies and do things that are fair and equitable and streamlined. And I think one of the issues about the height with the Ellington is causing a lot of concern. We don't have a current height limitation, and there's lots of different opinions about should we have a height limitation, like Hendersonville or not. My thoughts on the Ellington in particular is that it's, it's gained approval from the Downtown Commission. I've attended every city council member since I've signed up, and it appears that there's a majority of the downtown business owners, the people who live and work and are in that area that support it. Planning and zoning supports it, the city staff supports it. And something that's going to have unanimous approval from the, from the groups that are put in place by city council, I think it's tough to then change the rules in the end. If we want to put a height limitation on buildings, I think we need to do that and just play fairly by the rules and not change the rules afterwards. Thanks.
We have a next question. If you don't ask one, I will, and you know what that means. Ed Towson has a question.
I do, and I guess primarily for the city council, my question has to do with this issue of sidewalks and so forth. And I realize some money has been spent, some progress has been made, but I spend a lot of time on foot, downtown, and near my residence. In both instances, I would say that our infrastructure is largely crumbling, dirty, and not a very good place for our community. Yet, I'm thinking, safety has denied for life. Is there a plan to repay the gigantic number of roads, residential streets, downtown streets that are literally crumbling, missing, large sections, sidewalks being maintained, even down to the basic things of weeds and glass and rocks and all kinds of things all over the downtown area? Seems like that should be a fairly simple thing to address. You had a lot of costs, and I don't actually comprehend what happened.
Jan, why don't we start with you, but we'll include the candidates in the question too.
That's a great question. When Councilman Newman and myself first came on council four years ago, that particular council addressed the issue and allocated more money to streets and sidewalks than had been done in prior times. And we've continued to do that with each budget cycle. There is a plan, and that plan on streets and sidewalk, there's a maintenance plan that goes some 40 years out, which is pretty incredible to me. That has to do with the whole city. The downtown itself has been an initiative that I brought forward in strategic, in my strategic goals during the planning retreat this year. I think cleanliness downtown sidewalks, those things that, this is our front door, and we don't do a good job. We had been asking merchants to keep their sidewalks clean, and I think all of us can remember a time, all of us that have gray hair and are of the age group remembers a time when there were street sweepers in the downtown and the sidewalks were clean and it was a bustling, thriving place. Now, we, we had asked people to clean that as merchants, and this, this past year, we've added two new, two new crews to that maintenance of downtown. We've also opened public restrooms in the development office. So we're giving some attention to the downtown right now, and we want to continue that into the other areas. Sidewalks, we're way behind on, we recognize a huge need for sidewalks and greenways, and we're pretty committed to getting that done.
Can't speak to the past, but for the future, you know, I would think, looking at it from a business standpoint, we need to set some goals and just move forward on things and hold folks accountable if we don't get things done. I live in North Asheville, and there are probably four or five holes right in front of my house where the sidewalk's been cut up and dug up and the water line's been band-aided and again and again and again. So I think there needs to be some serious focus on our sidewalks and our streets. Downtown, you know, I think we have another problem with litter, which is homelessness. It's my understanding that there are an additional 150 homeless people living in Asheville over the last two years. That number's gone from roughly 500 to 650. And I think that probably accounts a lot to the downtown litter. And so I think we need to have some serious solutions to that. And, you know, the city addressed this about, about a year ago, and we're still, I'm hoping to get something moved forward to address that issue downtown with homelessness and vagrancy, so thank you.
You know, we've got different folks. When we run for office, everybody talks about, want to fund this, the recreation centers, want to fund the sidewalks. Oh, and we also going to dramatically lower your property tax. I, I think one of the things our council has done well is we have been, we have stood by Asheville taxpayers. We haven't, you know, we haven't let the property taxes get out of control in Asheville. But, but we've, we've been real strategic about setting priorities. And I think that some of the priorities we have set are the sidewalks, sidewalk improvements, and taking better care of our basic infrastructure like water and the appearance of downtown. So I'm real proud of that ability to, to watch out for taxpayers, but to really address some of these outstanding needs. Like Jan said, we've, we've got a new sidewalk crew working, we have a new dedicated downtown sanitation crew. I think it's already making a pretty good difference. I think we'll see more of a difference over the rest of the year as that comes online. One of the other things I've worked on as a member of council is I am one of our two representatives to the Metropolitan Planning Organization, which works with other local governments on transportation planning. And we've worked with them to allocate additional funding for local projects, and it's going to create about $2 million annually for small local projects in our three-county area. I also support the graffiti removal program that we've started this year. I think that's going to make a big difference, and I think the public restrooms will also help us out a lot in terms of public cleanliness. Thank you.
I have nothing to run on or to refer back to, as Brownie and Jan did, but I think common sense would tell us that this is just another issue that we need to address in terms of growth and development. If we are continuing to grow at this incredible pace and where our infrastructure is crumbling, I think maybe we need to think about how fast we're moving. The other thing is that maybe we could start lobbying for alternate streams of revenue to help with the infrastructure, such as impact fees for developers. And of course, this can't be handled on council, it would have to be done on a state level, but developer impact fees, the possibility of a small increase in the hotel or tourism tax that might be able to be diverted to infrastructure. Since so much of our business is tourism, they use the waterways and the streets and the roads, so it seems like a fair thing for maybe 1%, 2%. Just think about some creative ways to fund infrastructure improvements. Thank you.
And we need another question. You have been duly warned, what happens? Do our, do one of our guests have a question? Let me, let me bring up a question I know that somebody would want to ask, and that is on the I-26 connector. It's a very, very important part of our future. Getting it done right is going to be very important. And I think there's almost universal consensus of people in Asheville that we need to get the interstate traffic separated from the local traffic on Patton Avenue. What approach would you like to see us take to the I-26 corridor? And Bill, since we've rotated around?
I would say the smart approach that gets this done quickly. I've always thought that this project began about 10 years ago, but I met a gentleman last night that said that in 1986, I guess, was when the original plans came out to start looking at the I-26 connector. If you look at the, the impact on just the economics of the delays and the increased costs now that we're looking at, the study groups, the consultants, the, the time and money wasted while cars are sitting idling on our interstates and co-mingled with all the traffic getting across Smokey Park Bridge. I've been here for a decade, and I've seen it get a lot worse, and it's only going to get worse before it gets better. So I would just be supportive of getting involved. I know that the, the project with the Asheville Design Center looks very interesting. I like the fact that it takes a lot smaller footprint, and if we can get DOT approval on that and the community involved, and just, let's just get this thing on the road and get it done.
I think the, the most promising thing that's, that's happened in the last year around the I-26 connector is this group of folks in the Asheville Design Center who have, it's a group of local architects and professional urban design people who have really looked at the project and tried to think about, how do we make this project best fit into the heart of our city? And they've come up with some great ideas, and I really want to applaud Representative Go-4th has been, you know, an invaluable ally for our community in terms of encouraging the DOT to really look at these ideas. He's worked with some of the legislative leaders in the General Assembly who have important appropriations committee assignments to make sure this project doesn't slip on anybody's funding schedules. And it's a, it's a, it's a big project, it's a controversial project. The more community support we have for how we can do it, I think the, the better off we'll be and the sooner it will happen. A lot of folks in the business community have realized that this Design Center idea opens up enormous economic development opportunities and community redevelopment opportunities in the heart of our city. So I hope that we can have that work, and I think council has been very supportive of it, and I will continue to be a voice in support for that effort.
I would have to agree with Brownie. There's nothing where you can say about the I-26 connector. The Design Center one has the others beat, hands down. It's creative, it's thoughtful, less foot, you know, smaller footprint, preserves more land for people in the neighborhoods that it will affect. So I think that one is definitely the way to go. The DOT plans are not, not very good. Thanks.
You know, I was in, in this room when I first heard about the AIA 150 that became the Design Center, it was kind of introduced here, and I think it's, it's a really great attempt by a local group to do a better job. And we have, of course, funded a study in conjunction with the county to see the validity of that report and to move it along quickly, I hope. We, we feel like that, that it has great merit. There's some, some concerns been raised by DOT, but I think that if we could have that version of it come to fruition, we would have a lot of opportunities to open up Emma for development and, and housing and, and just things could happen there that's never happened. The use of the land around where that, the 26 corridor goes through would be greatly enhanced. In event it's not validated, I still think we should move forward quickly as we can. It's just taken too long, there's too much difficulty created by this bottleneck that we've got. Thank you.
We have one last question. I'm hoping we have one last question. Please. Jake Quinn has a question.
I'll ask you. I feel under oath.
No.
You can't use a microphone, and that's always dangerous. It's great having Representative Go-4th here today, especially because of the question that I had. Revenue dividend raises an issue or raises a point that there's some things the city can do and some things the city can't do. You might just make a reference to the telegraph, which certainly is a challenge. I think one of the most frustrating things with members of our community is the apparent failure of our elected leaders at the city and county level. If you get their heads together and craft solutions for early urban infrastructure. Now, of course, we've all heard about the water situation, but the legal light that just raised the issue that we do not have, the comprehensive city county labels. We were just talking about education. Education in the county is certainly as important as it is in the city. Perhaps it's another area where we can collaborate. All this is background, but a question, what can our city council do to improve the atmosphere of cooperation and collaboration among the city, the county, and the state? We can't succeed alone. We can do it together. I just want to ask the four candidates, what ideas you have, and help us make some progress in that regard. Thanks.
Thank you, Jake. That's actually an incredibly good question. So, Branny, if you start, please.
It is a great question. And, you know, I'm proud of a lot of the things that we've accomplished together over the last four years. I feel like we've gotten a lot of issues that really had been talked about for a long time, but nothing happened on them. And while we've been on city council, things have happened. But being on city council's been a real learning experience for me, too. And one of the things that's probably been the biggest disappointment for me has been the inability for the city council and the county commissioners and legislators to come together around some of these tough issues. And I think there's plenty of blame to go around, and I think there's blame for city council, and I take personal responsibility for some of the things we didn't do right. One of the things we did not do right is when we just, the, we were right to dissolve the old water agreement, because the water system wasn't getting fixed. But what we didn't do right is the city council took steps to, to begin the process of dissolving that water agreement without first talking that water agreement without first talking to the county commissioners and first talking to the state legislators about why we thought that was the right thing to do. And, uh, and that set up an environment that was less constructive than it should have been, and that was a real learning experience for me. So it's a, it's a, you know, it's an oversimplified answer, but I think the best answer is, we've just gotta keep talking about the important issues facing the community before any one body takes action on an important issue. We've got to make sure we've talked to our neighbors in the county and our legislators to get their input on it. We won't always agree, we don't have to agree, but we should have open lines of communication, and I think that will foster trust in our community.
We have been working so hard, you know, as Mountain Voices Alliance, we've gone to the city, we've gone to the county, and the best thing that you can do is just keep, keep the, the lines of communication open. Brainstorm together, facilitate with, through, with a mediator possibly. But you have got, we've got to realize that the city and county and, you know, the state, we're all in this together. There are no partisan issues, there are no boundaries between the city and the county anymore, they're fading rapidly, and we really have to work comprehensively together, because what affects one of us affects all of us. So communication is absolutely the key, and keep, keep moving forward.
I'll, I'll touch again on the dissolution of the water agreement. I think that that's created, probably taken more out of our lives as this council than, than you can ever imagine. It's been one of those things you wake up in the middle of the night and think about and worry about. And frankly, our commissioner counterparts do too, and I'd, I'd like y'all to know that we are good friends, that, that the members of the commission are, are great friends and great people to work with. And that line of communication needs to remain open, just as Elaine has said. It, uh, that's, that's the most important part, is keeping that communication going. I think that there will be a day when we'll have consolidated services, probably not by choice as much as the fact that financial part of it's gonna dictate it someday. That's a reality. I think as things get to be more expensive, we have to have better lines of communication and share. We were working prior to the dissolution of the water agreement on a joint planning area. That's the area around the city of Asheville as it goes into the county, not the extraterritorial jurisdiction, but a complete one-mile limit around, where would have given county land use planning abilities and, and us joint planning abilities with them enforcing that, had it gone through. Of course, with the water agreement, that stopped, but it was great conversation, and it looked like we were really on our way to a good land use plan that would have had, would have mirrored that county area to the city area. And I think that those are opportunities that will present themselves in the future in consolidation of services, the schools, the parks, rec, or, or all things out there. Hopefully, we can get beyond this, uh, this quagmire we've been in, the water system's being improved greatly, so hopefully we can get beyond that and start talking about these good things in the future. I appreciate that opportunity. Thanks.
Kind of reminds me of the Rodney King quote, "Can't we all get along?" Uh, I've been fortunate enough over the last 10 years to get to know four of the five county commissioners pretty well. Uh, the Davids, I go to church with one, I actually go to church with both of them. Carol Peterson's a customer of mine, and I know Nathan Ramsey a lot more over the last year. And I would like to just think that I could come in and, um, you know, kind of with a new face and a new look and a new, different angle about all these types of communications that go on between the city and the county. Uh, I don't have years of political baggage or predetermined positions about things, and I think that's one of the maybe more lighter sides of me that I think can actually do good in this, with this particular issue. I really do. Um, at the state level, uh, one thing I have is a lot of time to commit to this. My, my business is to the point now where, um, and I wouldn't be doing this if I didn't have the time to commit 30 or 40 hours a week to working very hard, and I think meeting the local community leaders, uh, the surrounding areas is very important, because Asheville is not just Asheville. We are the centerpiece to western North Carolina. We are the centerpiece of our county, the culturally, economic centerpiece, and the responsibility to us to be leaders, uh, with this issue of communication, I think is very important. Thank you.
I'd like to thank you again for being here. We're gonna give you a one-minute, uh, chance to, uh, give a closing remark. Uh, it, we really appreciate your leadership and your good citizenship and setting a good example for young people. Uh, if Elaine, you'd like to come up and start?
Um, I just want to repeat that we're at a crossroads, and we really need to make some important decisions quickly. We have the equivalent of heaven in Asheville and Buncombe County. This is a wonderful place to be. I would hope that we can maintain this. Um, I would like to support the wonderful work that the council has been doing, and hopefully, if I get elected, I can keep moving in that direction progressively. Um, and I just think that as a mother, my focus is how our decisions today will affect future generations, and I would like to think that my daughter and my grandchildren could enjoy what we have shared here, all of us have been lucky enough to, to experience here, um, for generations to come. So I think we need to just be wise in our decisions and thoughtful. Thank you.
You know, this community has been very good to me. In fact, uh, a lot of you folks in the room I know well, and have been customers and friends over the years, and, uh, I would like that opportunity to progress, or to, to go down to my son, who's part of our business today, and the, the other young people in this community coming along, that we can be here and be part of it. I grew up in West Asheville, and, uh, my roots are here. And I, I, I love the, the community so much and want to do so much for it. It's just an honor to be part of it. There are times that we're sitting in that, uh, in the city building down there, especially late in the evening, might be in a closed session, and you can look out the window, and you, you just kind of get a chill. I've often said, you kind of pinch yourself to say, "I'm occupying this seat, and the call that I make is a, a part of what's gonna be right or wrong." And I like to give thought and prayer to it, and it's just very important to me to be a part of it, and I look forward to the coming years if I am so fortunate as to be elected again. I appreciate all that you folks do, and I appreciate what this commi, this community means to all of us. And I would hope that you would consider me on election day. Thank you.
Again, thank you all for coming out. Uh, again, I'm Bill Russell, and I would really appreciate the opportunity to get in here and start serving city of Asheville. Uh, I have a lot of respect for the incumbents, uh, giving the time and commitment and putting up with all the wonderful things that, uh, we get to do during the campaigning. I can't imagine what it would be like to serve for four years. So they have a lot of things to balance and, uh, keep up in the air, and so, um, cheers to them, and, um, just think, think seriously about this, um, get involved. I think you all know the turnout for the primary was 13%. Uh, it's great to hear that you all are all committed to vote, uh, be committed to getting your centers of influences out to vote too. I think it's very important in this election. So again, it was great talking with you all, and, uh, see you soon.
I want to again thank the civitant for having us here today. My work in the community and on city council has taught me that no one individual can solve any of the complex, tough issues facing our community by themselves, and I certainly can't take sole credit for any of the accomplishments we've had on city council, but I'm very proud to be a part of a team on council that I believe has accomplished a lot. I've enjoyed working with Councilman Freeborn to invest in our public safety and, uh, help us attract and retain the best possible law enforcement officers to our community. Enjoyed working with Councilman Davis on ways to address the long-neglected, uh, needs on the Asheville Civic Center. Enjoyed working with Vice Mayor Holly Jones to propose and enact our tax relief proposal for Asheville families, which lowered our tax rate as well as fees on residential water bills. I enjoyed working with Councilwoman Robin Cape to make Asheville a leader in, in environmental sustainability and energy conservation. Our whole council worked together to address our water needs. It's amazing what we can accomplish when we work together. I believe we're on the right path in Asheville, but there's much more to do. I appreciate the chance to serve you for the last four years. I ask for your support on November 6th. Thanks very much for having us here today.
Thank you all very much for being with us, and Keith, I thank, I thank you for being the emcee of the program. Um, I'm, I would say, without further ado, but I got further ado, um, our directories are here. If you will please get yourself your copy, they're over there on the table. As you leave, you can get a copy of the new directory. Without further ado.